Okay, um, so for the work session agenda this evening, we'll be going over the draft audit, draft bylaws, and then the Board of Trustees' planning calendar. The first item will be the 2022 draft audit, and that will be presented to us by Mr. Jim Hinkle.
Yep. Thank you.
Am I on?
Uh, yes, you can speak right into it.
Okay, is that better? Just as long as the people online can hear me.
Absolutely. Yeah, we got a thumbs up.
Good, uh, my name is Jim Hinkle, and I'm with Hinkle &amp; Company CPAs, and we are performing the annual audit of the financial statements for the fiscal year end 22. We are really close to finishing up. I spent the day here in the staff offices, working with Nick, finishing up the last few reconciling items that we needed to go through, and have been doing that for the last several days, toward the end of last week, as well as this week, finishing them up. First thing that we have done in the audit is look at the town's internal accounting controls, the segregation of duties between the segregation, the initiation of a transaction, the approval of the transaction, and the recording of the transaction. We do that for the cycles of disbursements, payroll, cash receipts, to ensure that the regular transactions are being recorded correctly and have that segregation of duties. We have not discovered any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the internal controls. Those are terms of art for us. A significant deficiency is defined as a design flaw in the system of internal controls that would allow an error to go undetected in the ordinary course of business, and a material weakness would be a significant deficiency that might result in a material misstatement to the financial statements. So our review of the internal controls is that they are adequate and they are in place. We have audited the financial statements. We have taken a little bit longer than what we had originally anticipated. That is not because of the routine transactions that the town processes on a daily basis. What, what has caused delay in my mind of what I thought we would be finished by now is due to the timing. The 2001 audit was completed in the spring of 2023. So 22 was already done and closed when they were finishing the audit of 21. And we had some non-routine transactions such as audit entries that the prior auditor had made to the 2021 statements that some had already been accounted for in 22. Not knowing that, we had to go through those reconciliations. For example, the fund balance were, in regular terms, retained earnings for the end of 21 has to match the beginning fund balance in 22. There's no materiality guidelines in there, it has to tie to the dollar. And, and they didn't in several funds, water fund, sewer fund, the general fund. And, and as we finally got through, working with Nick and with Dawn, going back into 22 and 21 and the audit entries from 21, what typically happened was there were audit entries that the auditor did to 21's general ledger that then those transactions were accounted for in 22 and got doubled up. And so, once we figured that out, we corrected the financial statements. But that took a while to get in there. I didn't have access to the audit entries from 21. Dawn had to look through those and go through the ledgers to try to figure out what was double counted or miscounted, and we finally worked through that. So where we are as of an hour and a half ago, hour ago, all of the funds balance, all of the funds tie back to the prior year, all of the balance sheet items, yeah, the fixed capital assets, the long-term debt, all tie back to supporting documentation. I have updated the footnote information. All that we really need to do at this point is take it back to my office, have my administrative folks that are wizards at Word and Excel, make sure that the formatting is done so that it's readable and that the different schedules and the footnotes all pull together, and we ought to be able to pull a draft together within a day or two, certainly this week. At that point, we then provide Nick and the staff the draft for them to review and ensure that they're in agreement with how the financial statements have been prepared, and then they will put together the MDNA, the management's discussions and analysis that goes at the front end. We will just briefly proof those. Our responsibility is to ensure that there is nothing in the MDNA that is contrary to the audit evidence that we've received and, and retained in our files. We also will make sure that the numbers agree to the financial statement. Sometimes we get a dollar rounding type deal that we, we try to clean up. At that point, 22 will be finished. I have already received the 23 general ledger, so we can move right into 23. And we are at a good spot on the calendar in that our firm has finished all of our June 30 audits. We won't be starting our December 31 audits for about a month and a half. We're just kind of filling time, doing interim procedures on other municipalities. And so, we're gonna pivot right into the 23 year-end here as soon as the 22 report is issued. Maybe that's by Friday, if not, it'll be early next week. And then we'll step right into the 23 audit and move through the 23 audit as well. With that in mind, we've talked about then getting into a normal rotation where the audit would occur sometime in April or May. You all are a, how did I say this right? A non-self-collected sales tax, a state-selected sales tax. So the state is always two months behind in their remittances of the sales tax, so their December remittances aren't sent to the town until February. So any state-collected municipality really doesn't have their books closed and ready for audit until at least the early mid part of March. Usually that falls into April or May timeframe. From everything that I've seen thus far, once we get through this catch-up period, I, I stand here today saying that I don't see any reason why we can't hit a July 31 due date with the state auditor's office for this FY '24 year-end, which will get you caught up. You've missed the last couple of years.
Can somebody clap? I mean, I'm just so excited.
I'll hold the clapping until we actually get there.
I know, just hearing the words is just huge.
But you've missed the deadlines the last couple of years, so the state auditor's office does not give extensions if you've missed the last two years. So having an extension to September 30 isn't available. So we just need to hit July 31. And, and again, I, I see no reason for that. I, I know you're rotating potentially off of Dawn to some degree, as now you have Nick. I've talked with Nick and Patty about some options that, that might bring in a little bit of extra help for the year-end closing and, and audit preparation, some ideas like that. It's not on a full-time basis throughout the year, but a very short-term basis at year-end closing that will help that process as well. So I, I think we're moving in the right direction. It has taken longer. Part of that is it's a new audit for us, so we're kind of learning as we go. Part of it, again, like I said, is the 21 year-end got closed when 23 was open and 22 was already shut down. And so, there was a little bit of, of who's on first, if you will, getting out of 21 and into 22 and reconciling those accounts to make sure that, that what was done on the general ledger was not also done by the auditor in the 21 audit. So, all in all, I will say this, I usually hold this back until I actually present the actual audit report. When we do issue the audit, we will issue a required communications letter that we're required to communicate in writing as certain events occur in the course of the audit, and we've not had any of those. We've not had disagreements with management, we've not had difficulties during the course of the audit. Do have a couple of audit entries that we have posted. Most of those are these fund balance catch-up entries that I described. Another one or two dealt with recording of the premium on the new bond that was obtained in 2022. The bond proceeds was recorded as debt, but the premium on the bond, where the bond stated interest rate was different than the market rate at the time that bond was issued, wasn't quite recorded. So I'll communicate those with you as well. Finally, and I think this is probably the most important for you all, and, and that is, as auditors, we felt like we had open transparency. Everything that we asked for, we were provided in a timely fashion. We were never denied access to their information. So we felt like we were free to be able to ask for and receive whatever we needed to, to be able to perform an independent audit. So I think that's very important for you all to know that we did have that open access. Nick's been great to work with. The only downside with working with Nick was he wasn't here in 22. Going back that far, where nobody's around that was doing the books at that time, finding information and digging into accounts to answer some questions just took longer than what would, I would expect as we go forward to occur when he's more familiar with the, actually what's going on and, and is here during the time that those transactions or those events occur. I am open for any and all questions. There's no dumb question in my mind.
Awesome, thank you. Trustee Cannon? Any questions?
No questions for me, thank you.
Trustee Teetz, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Trustee Larry, or more?
I do have one question. My question is, you mentioned the doubling up of some entries, or lack of some. Did that have any financial consequences to future bound? Like, are we seeing any of that now, or has it all been reconciled?
No, that was between 21 and 22. It wouldn't carry on into 23 or 24, that is correct. Thank you.
Really no questions. I just wanted to say thank you for all the work, Mr. Hinkle. I know we've had a number of residents out there that are, you know, concerned about, you know, where, where the audits stand and that sort of thing. It seems like you guys have done a great job getting all this together. Finance Director Nick, David, really appreciate all the work you've done on this as well. So just very exciting, it's gonna be great to be caught up, so.
Yeah, no questions from me. I'm just really pleased to hear what you had to present this evening and really looking forward to getting those closed and seeing what January 31st holds.
Yep, and usually by the time I'm up, the financial statements are kind of old because you're into the next year. And, and usually what I do is talk about the audit process more than the numbers themselves. But going forward, if you all have any questions on the numbers, I'd be happy to, between Nick or I, field those, those questions as well. So, thank you very much. I will remind you that technically, we as auditors work for you, the Board of Governance. If you ever have questions, you're free to reach out to us. There needs to be an open line of communication. You can either call us directly or go through staff with any and all questions that you have, but make sure that you guys feel comfortable having any kind of questions that you have resolved. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Drive home, be safe.
Be safe.
Be safe.
Here's Mike. I'm having trouble with that mic.
Okay, next item up will be the draft bylaws. This is gonna be presented by our town attorney, Dan Sepienza. We're gonna do a brief presentation from him. Any big questions, feel free to ask. With as many trustees as we don't have here this evening, or can be maybe fully engaged, we'll probably bring this back for another work session, so I want you all to be aware of that. How about it, Mr. Sepienza?
Earlier this year, the board adopted Bob's Rules by the Colorado Municipal League. I think that was a good step forward and kind of clarifying and somewhat simplifying the rule.
I apologize, but I can't hear Dan.
You cannot hear me?
No, it's very light.
She's trying to turn it up as loud as she can. Give it one second.
Can you hear me right now?
It sounds kind of the same. I will bring it close.
Try that one, yep.
Trustee Teetz, can you hear me better now?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm sitting in your seat, the microphone's very good over here, so.
Totally fine.
So earlier this year, the board adopted Bob's Rules. Prior to that, the town by ordinance was using Robert's Rules for the organization of this board. But going back much further than even earlier this year, there's been a lot of conversations with this board about adopting some set of bylaws, some rules kind of to dictate and spell out how, how the organization works. We've not had those before. There was a work session in, I wanna say 2022, perhaps 2021, where a lot of, a lot of items were discussed. At that time, I think it, things got slowed a little bit because the board hadn't adopted Bob's Rules, which hadn't actually been published formally at that time. So as part of that discussion of the bylaws, it really got mixed in with talking about different kinds of motions and, and what was, what we're trying to draft got very bloated in terms of, it was hard, hard to understand. And I think it, we went a little too far. So with the adoption of Bob's Rules, I think it's, I recommend it's time to adopt some bylaws for this organization. As the mayor stated, because there's only four members here and limited participation online, I, I definitely would recommend this come back for another work session because as the bylaws, it's something that the whole board should agree to, to, to the extent possible, there should be consensus on, on what this means. It's, it's the agreed-upon rules for the interactions on this, on this panel. I'm gonna run down through these, these bylaws or the draft that I put in the packet, and certainly, these are all, every item in here, or I shouldn't say every item, but almost every item in here is up to, up for discussion. There, some of these are just repetition of items that are in state law or even in our local ordinances. They're still good to put in a set of bylaws because it's this body agreeing to the rules, right? It's kind of an acknowledgement of this is how we do things. So there are items in here, if you want to change, I might say, well, we can't do that. An example would be, we can't have ordinances passed without a majority of the board, right? It's a pretty basic thing, but that's in statute, so we couldn't change that. But a lot of the other items in here can be changed, so absolutely open for discussion. I've drafted these based on some conversations that were had years ago. Like I said, I think it was 21, 2022, when there was a prior discussion. I've also added in items that I think follow kind of the practice of this board over the last several years. And then there's some new items in here that I'll, I'll touch on kind of the, the really new items for discussion. To the extent that the board, you know, if you think I'm not quite capturing what has been done, let me know. You know, I think this is, at this stage, very drafty. So I'm, I'm absolutely open for, for feedback, for change, anything you'd like in here. I'm gonna run through the, the draft really quick. I'm gonna touch on some of the broad sections and then highlight some of the really, I'll say the new items that I think want to make you aware of, and maybe they might be areas, key areas for discussion. The, it begins with the purpose and the scope of the bylaws, it's just kind of a good overall statement. Section two is the structure of the board. All of this should be pretty familiar. It talks about who the mayor is and the mayor pro tem. I included in here some members' duties. For example, be on time, return from recess and break promptly. Some of these sorts of items, just kind of make sure that the board is, is prepared and, and does the work of this body. Section three is the agenda and board packet preparation. We've not gone into detail about board packet preparation in here because that's more the duty of the town clerk. But where this touches on things that the board needs to know, we wanted to include that. In here is an item labeled "Agenda items requested by trustees." This is perhaps the bigger, a, a larger change. In the past, there's, or pretty much for the history of this board, the idea's been two trustees can request an item be added to an agenda. And we've left that alone. I mean, I've not changed that broad concept here in this draft bylaws, but I've added some, some more timing elements to it. The reason being that, well, we've never had that before. So if it's two, two trustees can add any, an item to an agenda, what if that's a day before the agenda goes out, after the packets already due? So for purposes of the town and for staff, we need time to review items. If I don't have time to read agenda items that have been added, once it's put in the packet, it's kind of, well, it's public and it's presented as official statements of the town in some way or another. So we've added some kind of time element to that process where two trustees can add an item to an agenda. Well, it's, and there's, and there's, and there's leeway in this, right? And, and what I have is, and what I've proposed here is it's requested at, at a meeting. So at, at a regular board meeting, two trustees can say, I want to add something to a future meeting. At that time, and I've said three weeks, and that would be because if an item's added to an agenda on a Tuesday night, the packet is due, the packet for the next board meeting is due on Monday, on, on Monday of the following week. So that if it's requested on Tuesday, that actually gives staff three days. So to prepare, prepare, review, and get that done. And so adding an extra week in there would allow us to actually do the work properly. If we only have three days, we don't have time to do the research, we don't have time to do the review. It's, unless we drop everything. And we felt that, you know, it's been the practice of this board before, if an item requires extensive staff work, that that needs to be approved by a majority of the board, right? And so, the idea here is if two members are adding it to the agenda, yes, it will be added, but we need time to do that properly and get it in there. However, if the board, as a board, decides that it should be sooner, the board can vote. If a majority of the board says, get that on the agenda sooner, yeah, we'll get it on the agenda sooner. So there's, there's always some, some ways out of, you know, I don't want to say always three weeks, but there's a little bit of flexibility in here. That's a proposal, and I, but it's a slight change in the past practice. But we would really help our ability to make sure that the packet that's in front of the board for its decision-making is, is well-done. Section four is the regular, or the meetings. This section is, should be pretty familiar, work sessions, regular meetings, et cetera. Note that virtual meetings can only be held in compliance with town code, which requires very special circumstances beneath. Section five is on quorum and attendance. Again, this is very similar to past practice, it should be familiar to you. I have put in an example here just to really clarify that virtual attendance doesn't count toward quorum. That's been the practice of the board, I believe it's what our town, it's what our town code says. This just says it in plain language to make sure that everybody's aware of that. Attendance at ra, at board meetings, section B of five. There's been discussion, or had been discussion, and some towns have excused absences and you request permission to be absent. And I don't know if there was ever real consensus on this board about how that might play out. And so instead, have gone to excessive absences at the discretion of the board. Because what exactly would be an excused absence? It's kind of hard to say. And, and it, it, it's a process that I think even towns that have that spelled out in their code, I'm not even sure what exactly that means. It, it leaves a lot of discretion sometimes in the hands of the mayor to determine what's an okay reason and what's not to be present. So I didn't include that. If that's something the board would like more research on, meaning it gets more examples, I'd be happy to do that. But I, I felt it was somewhat cumbersome, yeah. Yeah, that has been a discuss, yes.
I saw God can be probably like, never got said in any.
It was talked about, yes. And what was clear from that previous discussion was X number of unexcused absences. Whether, I don't remember if it was three or how many it was. What wasn't clear was, I went back in my notes and I was trying to put this together, is what, what distinguished and excused from an unexcused absence? Whose discretion was it to make it excused and unexcused? And so that wasn't clear, and without that part, I wasn't comfortable putting it in here. But again, if that's something you want to go back to, to have a clearly delineated X number of excused, I can do more research on that, but I, I, I wasn't comfortable with the notes I had from the past. So I thought this was a, this was a strategy that would effectively have the same outcome. If the board as a whole decided that three was an excessive number of absences, that's determined by the board. And really, the, the outcome of it, even if it did say in here, three unexcused absences, to remove a member of the board, right, that's, that would be the effect of that. To remove a member of the board still requires a vote of the board. So even if the bylaws said you can't have more than three unexcused absences, there is no process legal in Colorado that you can automatically expel a member from the Board of Trustees. So there's going to be a hearing, there's going to be a process. So I felt that in here saying excessive, if the board opts to go that route and expel a member from the Board of Trustees and had, do that process, have that hearing, it can determine at that time what is excessive. That's kind of what I, what I went there. Order of Business is the next section. This is all very familiar, but I like laying it out. It's something that the, the town has been pretty consistent with in its agendas over the last few years. But spelling it out here and making, making clear that these are exactly the things that will, that will be on the agenda, and this is the regular order of it, I think was nice. Section D of that, subsection D of that section is extension of time. Here's another item where there's been prior board discussion on this. Practice has differed a little bit from the agreements that were made a couple of years ago. And also, I, I'm, I thought it would be a good opportunity to discuss whether it was working. And Town Administrator Garcia and I have discussed a couple of times, is it, was it nine o'clock, was it 9:30, or was it 10? And my notes had 10, but, but didn't you have 9:30? Okay, there's been some, there's been some discussion over the years of whether it was, what exactly the time was that would require the board to take action to continue the meeting beyond that point. And the discussion before was at that point, it could be extended up to two times for 15 minutes. And in here, I've said up to 30 minutes because usually what happens, if there's a vote at 10 o'clock, is you extend it for 15 minutes and that's basically just enough time for like two people to talk, and then you're voting again, right? So the 15 minutes hasn't, I don't know if it's really worked out in terms of kind of the, the flow and allowing the discussion to kind of end. So I, I would, just a, that, that's, just came out of my brain to change that to 30 minutes, not to 15-minute increments. But absolutely an item that can be discussed, there's no reason, you can set that to whatever you'd like. But section seven is public participation. This is all pretty standard, I don't know that there's anything dramatically changed there. We have spelled out in subsection E there about kind of a cutoff point for written communications sent to the board and when they'll be included, or when they'll be provided to the board, and when a packet will later be amended regarding that. Section eight is on voting, nothing in there is dramatically different than, or new. Nine executive sessions, the same. Ordinances in section 10. And that section probably, it, it leaves room, it could be expanded at a later date. There's not a whole lot of material in there, but there's a couple of things I wanted to discuss or want to make sure were written down. Section 11 is all new. And section 11 is one of the reasons that we put together these bylaws. I'm not sure, put together the bylaws, but one of the reasons the bylaws are here in front of you today is we're discussing a proclamations policy and thinking, well, we don't have a set of bylaws, so it's kind of strange to have a, a policy on proclamations, but we don't even have a, a written policy on any of these other things. So section 11 on, on proclamations, again, all-new section, it's rather detailed. It's been created based on a couple other towns. We've taken, we've taken a look at a lot of different proclamation policies, some better, some worse across the state. But I wanted something that was really clear about the process. It has some discretion in here at, at various points, but I wanted something that, that was clear on how it worked. There are written set, or a provided set of topics that you may issue proclamation, the town may issue proclamations about, a set of topics that the town will not issue proclamations for, and then a process for how you request them. Effectively, boiling all of this down on proclamations, it, it says that proclamations need to be 100% non-controversial. Effectively, because every member of this board has a veto. Any member of this board can say, I don't want this proclamation and it won't happen. That's, that's this process. Because if it's not, uh, agreed upon universally by the board, is it a proclamation of the town? You know, leaving out matters of politics, leaving out commercial promotions, leaving out town policy, if it's something about policy, then it should be a resolution or it should be something created in some other format. But basically every member of this board would have a, would have a veto over any proclamation. It has a process that kind of spells out how that works out effectively. Any proclamation that hasn't been pre-approved would go to the mayor first. Just because he's the mayor or he or she is the mayor and, uh, that's kind of your role. Goes to you first, um, to say yay or nay to. If you say no, it stops. If you say yes, it then is sent to all the other trustees. And if any one of those trustees says no, it stops. It's not going to move forward at that point. Town staff will not make decisions about content on these proclamations. It will go to the board for, through this process to, to evaluate. Town staff will evaluate the proclamations for completeness. They'll evaluate the proclamation for, you know, making sure it's submitted properly, making sure there's that the content has been submitted because the town staff isn't going to write proclamations if somebody requests one, right? Somebody comes to town and says, I want a proclamation, you've got to write it. That's all the town staff's going to do. Past that, it's going to go to the mayor. The mayor says, no, it stops. The mayor says yes, then it goes to all of the trustees to look at. If at any stage, anybody changes it, if trustee Mason says, no, if this line was removed, then yes. Right? You're, you're not saying no to it entirely, but you, you want to change the content. Then it goes back to the original requester to see if they're okay with that change. If they're okay with that change, it starts the whole process over and then it goes to the mayor. So at, at no point will a proclamation be issued that has not gone through approval by the requester and has not been looked at by all the board members. This process takes time. Therefore, there's a whole list of, of deadlines in here about how soon you have to get this in. We, yeah, it'll take time. Well, I'm going to move on. We can come back to proclamations because it is, it is detailed. Public hearings is section twelve. Nothing in here should be new. This is in regard to quasi judicial hearings and kind of how that plays out. Um, and last, section thirteen is on confidentiality. Talking about confidentiality materials provided to the board and, um, and in an executive sessions. So that's a quick rundown. Like I said, I, I, I do think with only, with only four members of the board here tonight and two online, um, I think this, something we want some agreement on. But I'd be happy to answer questions, take comments. Anything, so.
Thank you. Trustee Teets.
Okay. As you have a few comments and if we're planning on having another work session, I'm not going to talk your guys' ear off on some of them. One of the biggest things I think is the proclamations. I think one thing that is super important in supporting our community is the fact that we do have a diverse community. And I'm sorry, uh, trustee Moore, I'm going to use your proclamation as an example. So say the mayor didn't agree with a proclamation on LGBTQ items, it would have automatically been dismissed without even coming to the Board of Trustees to seek a yay or nay. So I, I don't have an issue with submitting proclamations ahead of time. I, as a trustee, would like to see all of the proclamations come forward because there is ideas and there is ways to shape things. The proclamation I presented is a huge example of us trustees being able to work together to make a proclamation work. So I, I really would like to look at removing only mayor approval first and have it come before all of us as trustees because really truly, when you look at it, we're not a strong mayor town. We are a board of seven and each voice is extremely diverse. That would have meant possibly trustee Moyers proclamation not coming forward. That would have meant possibly my proclamation not coming forward. And these proclamations mean something to everybody in our community. Whether or not we agree with it or we don't agree with it, I still think it's super important to look at inclusivity and making sure that we're not segregating certain things or certain people out in these kinds of situations. My other one is regarding the confidentiality and ethics. As long as that we remain not hearing constantly, if this doesn't transition to every contact and certain information starts coming from the, the town attorney regularly, I am fine with the section thirteen. I just want to make sure that that option doesn't get used to a point where we are limited on being able to answer residents' questions honestly and transparently. So I would say that's my, my thing when it comes to that. The time, the time limit, it was ten o'clock. With us voting for the fifteen minute approvals till ten thirty, I'm still comfortable with that. I don't feel we should go any later. I don't know, after most of us work a normal workday and then we've seen where we end up at eleven thirty, twelve o'clock at night. It's not fun for anyone at that point. And I think it starts creating some sourness and tiredness and our focus just, I know mine isn't, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but at eleven thirty, twelve o'clock at night, my brain is not firing on all cylinders. I had a few other comments, but none of them are like detrimental to seeing this go to an additional work session and me adding a bunch more information.
Thank you. Trustee Ken.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Stampianza, thank you so much for putting this together. Uh, it looks very comprehensive. Can you hear me? Okay. I can't hear myself through my headphones, but, okay, good. I'm just going to run through this. Uh, I've made some notes. I'm just going to call attention to the paragraph and sub paragraph. And I'll just make a comment. If it's going to come back for another one, but I just, these are things that are kind of meant something important to me. On the first page, uh, item two, C, three, about trustees should contact the town administrator within a reasonable time. I think we need to define reasonable time. I don't like ambiguity, uh, in policy. Secondly, section three, A three, agenda items requested by trustees. No, I understood that one. Never mind, disregard that one. Section five, the quorum and attendance. You know, there are going to be times when trustees are out of town vacation, working in training, sick like Sherelle and myself, you know? I, I think we need some discussion about what constitutes a quorum. If we can be present, now I understand in a quasi judicial, that might not be a, a valid quorum if you're attending remotely, but, uh, but for a regular meeting or a special meeting, I think I'd like to keep, uh, the, the quorum question out of the virtual realm, if you know what I mean. Uh, section B of number five. Number two, it says excessive absences. Again, this is something we need to define. If it's three, if it's five, if it's so many within a six month period, within a three month period, that's the kind of information that would help us define that. And also I had a question about pursuant to the Wellington Municipal Code. I could not find anything in the code about removal of trustees. Next section, consent agenda. Under order of business, number six. B four, consent agenda. Anyone may remove an item from a consent agenda, not just a, a, a board member. A member of the public, a staff member. This is common practice that, that anyone can, can take an item off the consent agenda. And I think we need to have that flexibility so that people can address that or address something that's not just going to be, you know, without any kind of discussion. Some things have to come up back for discussion. Let's move on. I like the extension of time, ten thirty should be the limit. Uh, the process for public comment under number seven, item C. There was a lot of questions that, that I had about, uh, people who send an email to a trustee saying, please include this in the public comment. I don't like that. I don't, I don't like it at all. I, I, if, if people want to comment, I think they should show up or show up at a virtual meeting or something to do that. Yeah. But if you are going to allow an email comment, we need to have some defined time limits and those comments need to be in the packet. Uh, I don't like the idea of, uh, having to email comments to the staff or, or, or you'll somehow know to send that to every board member. I, that, that just doesn't make sense to me. I also think under public participation, we need to identify what the time limits are. I know as a practice, we use three minutes, uh, which is fine. And I think that's pretty standard. But we also have somebody in, in our community that's always given four minutes and I don't think that's fair. So I think, uh, putting a defined time limit on public comments and giving then the mayor the flexibility to extend that would be, uh, would be vital. And again, that whole public comments received prior to the meeting, item E. I just don't like that. Voting by consent, uh, number eight B. I wish someone could give me an example of voting by consent. And that'd be a time for the next work session. Uh, the proclamations, I like that. There were a few typos in this section and we need to go through that. The review process, I don't have a problem with, uh, with anything in there, uh, who reviews it. If it, if any trustee and the mayor is a trustee, if any trustee says I'm not in favor of that, it kills it. So, but I do, I do like Sherelle's idea about at least having some way to discuss. Discuss that. Under item number twelve, public hearings, uh, we don't have a board of zoning adjustment. We have a board of adjustment. That's a typo. Hearing procedures, what I would like to see under the hearing procedures is something that's similar to what we see in six B that kind of lays out, this is how a public hearing will proceed. We'll start with this, then this person, then, then the applicant and then discussion and then this and then public comment. Cody does a real good job of, of laying that out before every, every public hearing where there's a quasi judicial process. But I think spelling that out, there's a certain element of expectations of what the process is going to look like. And our land use code doesn't say anything about public hearing proceedings. Let's see. And that, my fellow trustees, is all of my comments. And I do look forward to another work session on this where we can kind of chew on some of these ideas and and work out some of these, uh, questions we have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, trustee Moore.
A lot of these, I won't touch on too deeply, but I do have some comments. My first, I, I agree with trustee Ken wanting definitions around, um, more of the, you know, period in which the absences occur. What is that definition? I have, you know, like virtual attendance. How much is too much? Is it being utilized? Like is, is there an abuse of leniency to, to allow that? Um, or is it absolutely necessary? Um, something we should look at, myself being someone who travels a lot for work. I don't want to take advantage of that. My main concerns were with the proclamation. I agree wholeheartedly with trustee Teets and I was going to use your proclamation as an example too. I want to dig deeper into that policy because I do think that we all deserve a chance to, um, review. Not saying that the mayor shouldn't have that power or, um, first look, but I think that we are an extremely diverse board and all of our voices are equally as important. And I know for a fact that both trustee Teets and my proclamation were very impactful to the communities that they spoke to. And whether that's the loudest voice in the room or not, it doesn't take away from the need to be able to acknowledge groups, whether they're the silent, you know, majority or minority or who they are. I think we have a community that is diverse and dynamic. And so these comments about, you know, not serving the town or the town or the town, I don't think we can define that as one thing. I think we need to look at a way to be inclusive and not exclusive in that. I also, um, you know, have comments on other things, but that was my biggest one and I'm not going to get riled up right now. I would like to introduce or reintroduce an idea that we talked about in our strategic planning, which bylaws are great, but we had discussed some form of contract in how we publicly interact with one another, uh, represent the board, show unity, um, and treat one another and the town, um, and information. Whether that be in person, at events, in the meetings or social media, wherever it may be. I'd like for us to look at that again and find ways that we can, um, work together as adults and have a set of suggested rules, rules. I like a contract because then it has weight. But I'd love for us to bring that back, whether it's the same work session when we revisit this or a later one. Um, and just find a way that we can really display the unity that I feel that we have up here for the most part and protect one another in the town.
Thank you. Trustee Wigan.
I pretty much liked all the comments that's been made. Uh, I do have just a couple of quick ones here. I know we're going to be bringing it back. As far as the attendance, I think that all mainly goes back to a previous board where there was somebody had not been here for like almost a full year straight. And when they're not here voting, taking care of what their duties are supposed to be done, that's doing it a service to the board. And I think we need to have something on that. I mean, unexcused is a whole bunch of difference in sickness, vacation and all that. It just blatant unexcusable absence is the one thing that we should protect. And protect the board in the process of that. So I think that's what we should look at. I don't know how we can define that out, but, uh, and as far as the proclamations, uh, I like it going to everybody. And my question would be is do we have to be completely all in agreement on it or could it be like a super majority? Because I know some things that one person just made because whatever their beliefs are, could not vote for, it should not probably kill the proclamation completely. So that might be something we want to think about, maybe a, a super majority, not just a majority. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
I mean, that's, that's clear.
Okay. And that's pretty much it. And I know we'll be bringing a lot more stuff up, so.
Remember.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, let's see, a couple of things here. I'll just kind of go through down the line, uh, based off some of the comments I've heard already. So, uh, as far as the, uh, the ten As far as the uh, the ten o'clock and the single extension up to uh thirty minutes, I think that makes a lot of sense. It doesn't make. I the the idea having the two fifteen minutes extensions never really made a lot of sense to me. I feel like it's kind of a time waster there. So I think one thirty minute extension makes. Makes sense. Uh, as far as two C three goes, uh, questions submitted uh at in a reasonable time prior to the meeting. I I I've said this a number of times where especially if the packets are going to end up coming out on Thursdays. Uh, I think it's very reasonable to ask that the board has their questions submitted to the town administrator. Uh, by Monday. Uh, I don't know what time that would be or whatever, but. I think it's got to be done by Monday because that allows her some time to get back to staff and. Uh, ask their input and get that into the potentially an amended packet. Uh, for Tuesday. So that would be my advice there. Uh, as far as five B three goes, uh, forum. Um, I do think there needs to be at least four members physically present. Uh, I I. I think doing this job, you know, if we all decided, well, we're just not going to be here and we're not going to show up. Uh, you know, if if we had a a quorum that was entirely virtual. And we weren't uh beholden to our residents that happen to show up to this room and have comment, I think then we're. Kind of maybe derelict in our responsibilities there. So I do believe there needs to be at least four members here. Uh, if there's not four members, then obviously we bump that meeting to the next time. Uh, six before consent agenda. Uh, I do not agree with trustee Cannon that uh public, the public should be able to ask for items for removal from the consent agenda. Uh, these are, I I if we wanted to potentially maybe add staff to that, I think I could be open to that, but as far as the consent agenda goes, these are. Generally administrative business items that we. If if the board agrees on them, I I think. I think that's just the right right way to go. I don't think there's a lot of reason to be spending a bunch of time. Uh, having having folks remove items just without. You know, without having them reviewed in in the first place, these types of things. So that that would be my suggestion there. Uh, seven E. Uh, I do agree with trustee Cannon that public comments should be submitted to the Board of Trustees' email address. Not to any individual trustee for inclusion in the packet. If a. Community member wants their comment included in the packet, please send your comments to all of the trustees. That way we've got a chance to review those. Before we um make any, uh, you know, you know, do I I would want to. I would want to see that. Uh, before I show up to a meeting and and have discussion about it. So please do submit your. Comments to the Board of Trustees' email address would be my advice there. Uh, I also think that all I I would also agree that all public comments regardless should be three minutes with. The mayor's discretion uh to extend if he'd like to do that, but all all public comments should be three minutes period. Uh, if we want to debate about what that time is, maybe it's four minutes, maybe it's five minutes. I think three minutes is a reasonable number, but. All residents should be beholden to the same number. Uh, part eleven, as far as proclamations go, I you know, I've always said that I believe proclamations should be solely within the purview of the mayor's office. Uh, I think that proclamations, as uh Mr. Sapienza mentioned, uh, should be something that ninety-five percent of residents or higher agree on. I mean. If we have any one member of the board disagreeing with a proclamation, then uh we have not met that threshold. So. Uh, I do like what we have here as far as a draft document. Um, again, I've I've always been in favor of it being solely within the mayor's office, but. If we're looking to make a compromise here as far as having. Uh, individual trustees be able to submit their proposals or these types of things, I think this is a very good way to get that done. Um, my only question would be maybe on eleven G one. There is a question there of. Apologize, let me get to the right spot. Uh, it says trustee, uh, eleven G one, uh, trustees will respond to the town clerk with a statement of whether or not they consent to the proclamation or not. Uh, I guess my question there would be, what kind of statement is that is a simple? Uh, no. Good enough, or are we looking for something? Substantial? What are we looking for there?
That's a question for me. The the intent there, uh, with the second sentence being no reason must be given for that, um, was simply a. Yes or no? So is. Is all that is required in that response? A further statement would be optional, but you know, once it's, once that communication goes back to the town clerk, you know, that would be a public record. But. The intent was a yes or no would be appropriate.
Okay, yeah, and and I I do appreciate that. That that would be my advice is a simple. Uh, yay or nay is good enough. If you want to include an additional statement, you certainly can. Uh, but my advice there would be that, uh, if 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 one of the trustees wants to shoot down a proclamation with a simple no. That should be authorized. And. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Uh, bringing back to trustee Teats real quick.
Yeah, um, so I know it was made mentioned that. There is a resident that receives four minutes instead of three, and that is an ADA accommodation by law. That if they request an accommodation to be able to speak in public. Do items like that, that there is certain accommodations that can be made for them. So I just, I wanted to point that one out. I know it was requested via the town and the ADA was the acting request. And regards to ninety-five percent of the public supporting a proclamation. Um, there was not a single member of our board that received ninety-five percent of the town's vote. So us asking to have ninety-five percent support of the public. When. You look at percentages for who voted for whom. There's not a single person that received that ninety-five percent vote. So. I think that when you focus on the fact that the goal. And I think it's actually even when we discuss our strategic planning and our mission. That it was inclusivity was going to be one of our focuses. So and you can correct me if I'm wrong. I haven't. Reviewed that document since we sat down and did it, but. I think it is super important to remember that we are representing people that elected us. That we don't tell them what to do or what to support, that we simply support what they are asking us to support. Um, and that's going to come different to every single one of us as board members. I liked the idea of residents being able to request something being pulled off the consent agenda. Possibly because of the fact that it's their money we're spending, and sometimes there is monetary items in that consent agenda. That we are approving, and I think residents do have a right to speak to. Funds that we are allocating from their sales tax dollars. Um, other than that, I think a lot of the items spoke to this evening are. Pretty much. Where. I was sitting with all of my notes.
Thank you. You know, when I look at this, I I look at. You know, this isn't just for our board. This would be for future boards and what are we, what are we trying to do? To protect. The town and then also. Like the rights of the people, right? When it comes to proclamations, I am totally in favor of something of like a super. Majority vote or something like along those lines to to make a proclamation. I am in favor of. You know. Proclamations not dealing with matters of politics, individual conviction, things of that nature, just because of. Uh, the areas where it could open us up for something. Uh, such as a lawsuit from whomever, um, in any situation there. So that's that's where I stand there, obviously. But I am definitely in favor of. It not being something that is given to the mayor first. I believe it should go to the entire board. For approval. Consent, I think that residents should be able to pull that because. Once again. I don't know who may be on staff or who may be on the board at the time. And what what may what may be put on consent that maybe shouldn't be there. So I believe it's within the rights of. Our residents to be able to pull that. Um, I don't, you know, I don't think we're going to do anything ridiculous. I mean, yes, could it maybe be abused to waste time? By residents, sure, but I believe they they should have the right to 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 pull that. Um, based off of what trustee Cannon said, um, that resonated with me. I believe to have a forum, we should have four members present. I don't think we should do anything online, um, there. I am in one hundred percent agreeance that if an email goes out, it should go out to all the board of trustees to be included into public comment prior to the meeting. That way we can all view it. Um, it's not a last minute thing. That may that may catch some of us off guard. You know, some of us may come directly from work in some cases. I want to avoid that at all costs. When it comes to uh trustee Moyer bringing up. Coming up with the guidelines on how we interact, how we treat, what we say, what we do. I think that should be a part of our bylaws, um, one hundred and ten percent. That is something that we need to um. Butt down the hatches on for sure to make sure that we're engaging properly with one another. And uh. As a team. I think the reasonable time. I think Monday would be great to have questions from a trustee to the town administrator. Would be good. I would say probably by. Ten AM Monday, I would like to put a morning timeframe on that to give them as much time as possible to do research. Um, and amend that packet if need be by Tuesday. Uh, when it comes to time extensions, I would say one thirty minute is good. Get rid of the fifteens and just give us a thirty minute block. That way it's not interrupted. Uh, and that would give, I mean. Theoretically, not everybody would maybe get the chance to talk depending on the timeframe there because everybody's entitled to their their five minutes, but uh. It is what it is. I believe in the three minute public comment um with, you know, obviously you can. You know, submit something to change that or. The mayor, I myself, whoever may be in the seat. Um, is is within their means to extend that time if they see fit outside of any other accentuating circumstances. What else? That's all. That I have. Right now. I'm going to bring this back to trustee Mason real quick or Mary Portem Mason.
Oh, well, thank you. I just I just wanted to make one quick comment regarding the consent agenda item because it it seems like maybe. Seems like maybe we've got a little contention there. So I did want to point out that. Consent agenda approval comes after public comment. So if a resident wants to come up and make public comment about an item on the consent agenda, they they are. That is certainly within their ability to do that. And please correct me if I'm wrong. We can pull an item from the consent agenda after public if we make that motion to have the. To have the agenda modified at that point, we can certainly do that. It would that be. So my my suggestion would be, you know, if if a resident has an issue with something that's on the consent agenda, please bring it up in public comment, and then I would say if if a board member has substantial issue with that or wants to. Make the motion to remove it from the consent agenda at that point, that would be. Uh, that would be my suggestion.
Uh, there's also, I mean, I guess, uh, on that, maybe maybe a good. Safety net or checks and balances would be that the resident. Could request to remove it and then the board votes on the residence's request. That might be a little. Sticky, but.
I can see if I can write.
Just 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 some thoughts there. Let me bring this back.
Perhaps in there, um, under the section on the consent agenda, just make clear that. That it can be removed at that time, you know, make make very clear in the bylaws consent agenda during this, you know. Step one of the consent agenda, ask if anybody wants to remove anything, and then you can go through the board and have that discussion at that time.
Okay, yeah.
I can find some language that kind of emphasizes your point, Airport.
Further discussion there at the next work session for sure. I will get to you, trustee Cannon. Trustee Moyer was first. Trustee Moore.
Yes, thank you. Um, I. This is one of the notes that I have before that I just skipped over. Um. The public comment emails. I would ask perhaps that they would be due at the same time as trustee questions. For the simple reason you said, some of us are coming straight from work. If someone submits something at four PM on a Tuesday, the chances, and I. Dealt with this a lot in planning commission, being able to read through, especially in a contentious subject, all of the public comments before you come in prepared for this meeting is nearly impossible. So. My request would be that we hold. You know, ourselves to the same standard as the town or vice versa and have those do at the same time. For staff and our preparedness. And then, um, the extension. I'm fine with leaving at ten thirty every night. I do want to say if we're thinking about other boards in the future, we don't know what. What they may be dealing with at any point in time, and some things are so immediate that. Restricting ourselves. Absolutely to one thirty minute extension, I don't think allows for the flexibility that may be needed and. Who knows what kind of circumstance, but I think maybe if there was language that allowed. A little bit of leniency there or a second possible extension, nobody has to say yes, but we at least have that flexibility. Um, and then the consent agenda, I. I think what trustee Mason was just saying, uh, or Mary Portem, sorry. Makes a lot of sense, and I think that there's ample time between when the packet is released and when we come into this room. To voice your dislike of any consent agenda item. Through the trustee emails, through public comment, before you come in here, having a discussion with one of us. There's plenty of time to make your. Your wish known, thank you, your voice heard, that. Pulling it at the moment of public comment doesn't seem to answer.
Thank you. Uh, trustee Cannon.
Thank you. Uh, I would recommend that before we start adding language about the consent agenda, that we do a little bit more research. The reason I feel so strongly about anyone could do this because I think there was a legal determination made. Several years ago in Colorado about consent agendas. And the consent agenda, uh, the the reason we've, I've always practiced that. I've practiced it every place I've been. Anyone pulling that that item. For the same reasons that everyone else talked about. I mean. You know, someone's got a question about it. There's there's a a huge typo or something in in one of the minutes. Uh, I've only seen probably in eleven years of. Of uh. Abduing consent agendas, probably three occurrences. Total where something was pulled. Uh, and it's usually pulled by a by a trustee or by a city council member. Uh, but staff can also pull one, and uh. I think the determination made by the by the state was that anyone, including. An audience member or resident could have that pulled because of the nature of what we do. So I would just recommend a little bit more research on that. Find out what best practices are instead of us reinventing a wheel and. And having a complicated procedure about, well, only during public comment can the public pull and make a comment about a consent agenda item. It's real simple. You you pull it, it goes on the back of the agenda, they prop it open, someone makes their comment, you pass it, it goes on. So we're not talking about. A big structural change here, but we are talking about, let's let's try to be uh. Fair and open minded uh. About this, so a little more research on that would would be appreciated. And I like the idea of the super majority, too. Thanks, Dave, or uh trustee Wigan for. Presenting that. That's that sounds like a good idea. We're not always going to agree. But the thing is, we don't have to always agree. And having a proclamation policy that says everyone has to sit be on board with it. That might be a little too cumbersome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good direction.
Fantastic feedback. I mean, this is this is exactly the the what we were looking for with this, so this is very helpful. You'd like to bring this back for another work session?
Yes.
What product would you like at that time? Would you like me to make perhaps based on?
I would say.
Conversation, make some changes? Um, I'll redline it so it's it's clear and where there's areas of perhaps disagreement or or. If you want to say disagreement, but. Options, um, I'll I'll kind of highlight what the comments were. Would you would you would you like that product um for that work session?
Yes, please.
Okay. Okay, I think I can. I think I can work with that. Okay. I think I can, I think I can work with that. Um, with the, uh, trustee Moyer, you raised the, the contract, kind of the, the guidelines. I, I'm not at all clear what to put in that. So, 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 and so, so that's, well, that's an, it's an item that's been raised by the board a couple of times as a, but it, it felt like it needed to be created by the board, uh, as an entity. And so, um, you know, when it comes to laying out rules, procedure for how a meeting's run, but when it comes to talking about code of conduct outside of meetings, things like that, I, I think that needs to be kind of originate here. The, the agreement for how you work together, I, I, I kind of even hesitate to say it should be the same document simply because I think if that becomes the same document, I mean, I, I'm concerned that it's, it's going to delay adoption of anything, uh, for an extended period. Separating them, um, could be, could make a lot more sense, but, but I really, in the previous discussions, yeah, I, I really just believe it's, it needs to kind of originate here. We, we can help draft and, and refine, but when it's the agreement among the board about how you interact with each other, I think that, that needs to be, it needs to start here. So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of hesitant to even propose a draft. Right? Great. Okay. So, so I can, I can bring something back, um, and we'll figure out when that next work session will be. I think we need to talk about, uh, look at some, look at some calendars. Um, one item that I want to, uh, bring up and trustee Cannon, Cannon raised, um, uh, virtual attendance and not limiting that. The, the reason, the reason for that rule is under our town code, a virtual meeting can be held. The, the town board can operate via a virtual meeting, but because of the language of the town code, that virtual meeting can only be held in occasions of public health emergency. It, it's got some, some specific language about these are the times only when a virtual meeting can be held. And so it begs the question of if five members of the board are here virtually and two members are here in person, is that really an in-person meeting? And so the reason that we've gone by this rule of there must be quorum present here is because it is an in-person meeting. If you don't have quorum in person, then it's a virtual meeting and our town, our, our code says that can only happen in specific cases. Um, so that was a decision made back during COVID about that, when a virtual meeting could be held for reasons. If, if there's a desire to change that, we can research whether that's allowable or not to, to, to have virtual meetings just for any reason at all. But that's the reason for that rule. Is if you're not here, it's not an in-person meeting. So.
Virtual attendees from being able to vote in non-quasi judicial proceedings, it just means we need to have a quorum here physically present.
Yes.
Which I agree with trustee Mason. We all ran and promised the public that we would show up and we would do our job. And so I think we should really consider that when we look at that piece.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, trustee Teetz.
Sorry, guys. Um, uh, this, my, sorry, I raised my hand earlier when you guys were talking about the, the board contract and items like that. I don't mind that coming back to a work session. The only thing to remember is, is while we can agree and items like that evolving how we treat each other outside of meetings, I don't feel that it's something that can be forced. There are some trustees that don't speak with each other outside of meetings. There are some trustees that see each other often outside of meetings and those, you know, and one thing that we need to remember is there's still, even as us as trustees, we still have First Amendment rights. So if it's brought before us on an item that we are not allowed to speak in public about items related to our trustee position or how we feel about specific items, uh, it's not something I would probably get behind. So, and I know that it would probably eventually come back as a vote, but it's not something that I would be able to support in the long run. I mean, when I see our fellow trustees out and about, I am absolutely cordial and kind to everyone that I see. And sometimes that kindness involves not interacting, but when it comes down to it, I don't know if we can control behaviors when we're out and about in public.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is more about just promoting decency amongst ourselves. So promoting that is, is, I think huge and we should stand for something like that because it's what we would kind of want and expect for our own community to have towards one another as well. Um, so, uh, I understand where you're coming from, but, uh, maybe look at it through a different lens. Even when it comes down to that. So that's all I have to say on, on that point. Um, okay.
And I'll reach out, trustee Moyer, I'll reach out to you and kind of get an idea of what you're looking for.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Okay, on to the last item of our agenda. The board planning calendar.
All right. Um, so our next meeting will be January 14th. Um, so we have some regular items on that agenda. On the 21st, you'll have a joint work session with Main Street and the chamber. Um, so far we've got nine to 10 from Main Street, nine to 10 from the chamber. So, um, that'll be a good meeting. We'll have that up first and then we'll roll into, um, talking about boards and commissions and the interview process and potentially a discussion about the finance committee and the status of that committee and, you know, where it's at right now. Um, moving on to few, another, the next work session is a joint work session with the Board of County Commissioners. That'll be on February 18th. Um, we'll be talking about the IGA, um, for the growth management area in, um, Larimer County. Um, I've heard a couple of things that need to be added to the future meetings agenda. So we will work on that tomorrow. Um, and just, just we're, we're, I'm working with staff to try to plan out the year and so we don't get backlogged with, things that just can't get completed. You know, we have some major CIP projects, things we need to go out for RP for, master plans, things like that, that are really need to be a priority. So I want to make sure we, we plug those into dates and, and do dates. So that way as new things come up, we can try to plug them in and I can let you know if we have the capacity to complete additional items and that, and whatever timeframe that is or not.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. And Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yes.
This is exciting and happy new year.
And happy new year. All right. Thanks, everybody.